This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening. I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Public Utilities Commission's Order for Sure Business is being held on August 21st.
...........................
Welcome, everyone. Thank you for being here tonight. Are there any announcements, Mr. Director, that need to be made in relation to the fact that this hearing is being held remotely outside of the building?
No, sir. The post is available.
Thank you. Next order of business is the consent agenda. Any issues that need to be removed from consent?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I second that motion. I'm in favor of approving the consent agenda, so by my saying aye, we'll stay unanimous. Next order of business is items removed from the consent agenda. There are items, so we're going to water and sewer discussion possible action after appeal.
Okay. Yeah, this is item four. Mr. and Mrs. Burlebs are here, and we've got the information that the Water Division office has sent out. It will be moved over to Mr. Samway and Nathan.
Sir, so Mr. and Mrs. Burlebs, am I saying that right?
Yes.
So in October of 2020, they received a $591.75 water sewer bill. That was significantly higher than their average bill. Their following bill in January 2021 was even higher, $826.39. When we went out and read their year for that January bill in December of 2020, we called to let them know that their reading was very high and that they, there's likely an issue there, probably an internal plumbing issue. At that point, the customer had just gotten in contact with a plumber who discovered they had a leak in toilet. The toilet was fixed, and the customers' consumption returned back to normal. As of April 26, their bill was nine, their current balance was $916.43. And I will add that the past several months, the customer has been making a valiant effort to pay down his balance. They paid $200 in each February, March, and January, February, and April, and $400 in March. And that $916 balance on April 26, that check today is actually down to $700.
Hey, Neil.
So the customers reached out to us to see if there's anything that the commission can do to help them with that high bill or to help them paying it down, please.
Okay. And good evening. We've read your letter. Thank you very much for being here. We appreciate it. Anything to add to the issues of minimum payment in your letter?
Well, I'm not sure what month consumption was in the most. But during the winter, I was advised by my neighbors to put the faucet in the kitchen because if it doesn't, one neighbor had $3,000 that he had to find. Another neighbor woke up in the morning and no water. But was this in the window once?
Uh, no, sir. The market reads were in the period of mid-June or mid-September. That was the first bill, and then second bill in mid-September through mid-December.
All I can say there is, it must have been a serious leak.
Was it a leak?
Yeah, serious leak.
And you fixed it back?
Yeah.
I will say that's not inconsistent with what you might see from our public utilities.
There was a correspondence today, but I can't seem to locate it in the inbox from Mr. Henry. Yeah, it's right here, right? That's okay. And, Sir, anything?
I am thankful that the problem was resolved, the leak in the toilet. After the name, the water was used, the water was disposed. And if there's an opportunity to enter into a payment plan, a small payment plan, with no interest, I would be supportive of that to have that payment plan pay down the balance as long as there's no outstanding balance other than what appears here. I think this has been outlined. I would support that. So, your clarification to the document is just a draft that just shared with the public utilities. Not with the customer. You might want to go full terms, or I can do that. I would be supportive of a payment plan, and I think there's been some indication of $75 a month or a minimum payment of $75 a month, and that would also involve no interest for the late payments. That would be applied and mandated to work down the balance to be active, subject to if the payments are made, no additional balances are required. So I can go through this at the live deal. Minimum $75 a month, no interest, 12 months outstanding balance, a total of $1,2022 in January, $1,021 divided the full amount as paid by May 31, 2022. The main current future water sewer bills, contact, I think you should contact the office to enter into the agreement within seven calendar days if this is what you'd like to do. And I'll leave it to office staff to work out the details with you if you'd like to do that. But the idea behind me of this is, could we know, no interest, no leverage? Well, sir, to be quite frank, I was shocked when I saw the interest rate. I can remember working for Connecticut Savings, and at one time we did have, and this is back in the 60s, we did have interest rate of over 5.5%. Now, the savings counts in these banks are .41. And you sort of get used to see a 5%. I was shocked. So I would be shocked. My wife did make the contact with Cindy in the Water Division. So I'll leave it to you, what did you make of Cindy?
I said that I paid $200.
So she said she made $200 a month.
I lost my particular.
Yeah, I do see that on your account. So if you keep making those payments, you'll have to pay off even sooner.
Okay. I'll take Mr. Ryan Bold's statement in the record as a motion. I will second that motion. Any discussion on the motion? If you're not all those in favor of adopting the motion, sign by saying aye. We'll stay unanimous. Thank you very much. We urge you to communicate with the staff of the Water Department to get this resolved in accordance with what the motion was made on the afternoon. Thank you. Next order of business is Agenda Item Number Five, Discussion Possible Action After Appeal.
Like a matter of something? Um, so this was a customer that paid all bills from, they had moved to Vermont in May of 2014, and from May of 2014 to December 2019, they paid all the bills on time. Then, beginning of December 2019, the customer was not receiving a change of address. They did not notify us through writing. So eventually, we did some investigative work, and we reached out to Mr. Wallach. He said that he is no longer in Vermont, and we sent him a change of address process to the Water Division. He subsequently has. We have updated our customer information system database, and then we also filed, scanned and filed the correspondence on that. In the interim, Mr. Wallach has paid all the back interest on his account, so he does have a zero balance at this time. This item is in kind of the Public Utilities Commission because a formal request was made for the PUC to address this. It has self-resolved, but we need to follow the process through. And so, quite frankly, our recommendation to the Public Utilities Commission is that no action needs to be taken on this item.
Okay, thank you, sweetie. Sir, Mr. Wallach here this evening. See any... Mr. Ryan Bold, if you can add, I'm not inclined to make a motion. We'll second the motion. So no action is, we're letting no action be taken on Agenda Item Number Five. Moving on to Agenda Item Six, which is the prompt, and my number of law, I'll go with number eight. I think there is number seven. Catch. I'm looking at our copy. Yes. So Agenda Item Seven is the documents in a package that then, hence Seven, is the Waste Water Treatment Sledge Transportation and Disposal Agreement Extension. So am I correct to say that that's not on our agenda?
That would, so it's, I have revision two of the agenda.
Oh.
And it's on and on along with the two.
Should Kathy send us a revised agenda?
She appears to have. She passed it. It's dated April 30, 2029, the one that got sent to the part office.
Can I just, thank you, to find out if they didn't see a copy of it? Okay, terrific. So the revised agenda does have a, does have a number seven, Discussion Possible Action Sewer Waste Water Treatment Sledge Transportation and Disposal Agreement Extension. I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Henshaw, Mr. Shaffer.
Well, and I am turning this over to Mr. Samway and Naples. I think Neil's memo of April 28 is very detailed, yet fairly easy to read, and does a good job of describing the situation. And then he provided not even the Syngro agreement.
So, previous background, so five years ago, when I started, this was one of the first tasks assigned was to look at the Waste Water Treatment Sledge Transportation and Disposal Agreement. And at that time, we did a thorough analysis as to where the long-term research plant can dispose of its sludge. We basically have the options. One is to Syngro. The second is Veolia at the plant in Nogatuck. And the third is the Metropolitan District of New York. Now, they could work from backwards. The MDC cannot guarantee us that if I get a contract, they're the main customers themselves, if they have their own four wastewater treatment plant. So that is where they incinerate their sludge and turn it into electricity. There is Veolia in Nogatuck. They are a backup customer, but we found them a bit inconsistent with their ability to take sludge at a high. The strongest selling point, for lack of a better phrase, is with Syngro, is they have backup facilities with both transportation as well as disposal. So if something happens with their transportation, they will continue to move it off-site. And even more importantly, something happens with the incinerator in Waterbury, they have alternative sources as to where they can either dispose of it or incinerate it. So it's a built-in insurance. So we are looking at a five-year extension that will begin January 1, 2022, and then continue through December 31, 2026. Okay. So current cost, or the proposed cost effective January 1, 2022, would be $104.08 per wet ton. Mr. Bernie sent some questions this afternoon. If I can go through those, if you can, right now, I'll just leave them for the record. Hypothetically, if the contract was for a term of six years, and you utilized the current agreement's methodology to adjust the current price to the 2022 price, what would be the, what would be, what would the 2022 price be, AKA the hypothetical 2022 price? Well, the 2022 price would be based off of Boston, Rockton, Nashville, January 1, 2022, CDI, the Seumor Price Index. I don't have that number right now. So what I did is I did a 10-year lookback, and the average inflation for on the Januaries was 4.68% per year. So if I move that forward, the 2022 hypothetical price would be 104.08 per wet ton. Assuming, so moving on to question two, assuming the $104.08, the actual 2022 price, wet ton, is above the hypothetical price, what is the percentage increase from the hypothetical 2022 price to the actual 2022 price? So backing up, I will compare the 2021 actual to the 2022 actual, and it's 8.00% increase. If I, if I compare the 2021 actual to the 2022 hypothetical, the increase is 3.17%. Actual over the hypothetical is plus 3.17%.
And the natural awfulness in that question is, do you think that that's a reasonable increase? And it's so wrong.
Correct, and I think so. So let's jump into your question three, and then we can kind of back up to that a little bit.
Okay, sure.
So footnote number one mentions Torrington bid prices. I will assume, I will ask you to elaborate on the similarities between Torrington and Wollinger, and why the numbers in Torrington are compelling, or at least strongly pervasive to support the adoption of the extension. So while we were finalizing proposed Amendment Number Two, City of Torrington put out a bid, a three-year bid, for their sludge transportation disposal. Because for, for the record, Torrington is also undergoing a tertiary phosphorus upgrade, which is about eight. Their contractor is CH Nickerston as well. They're about nine to 12 months ahead. They have an activated sludge treatment process, and they have a screw press. So they de-water their sludge probably 22%, 25%. We hit around 18% to 20%. So theirs is a little more cake. So theirs is a little more firmer. But Torrington went out on the open market. They bid a three-year contract. They had two bidders, Veolia out of Nogatuck, and Syngro out of Waterbury. You can see the bid prices were $127.07 per wet ton and $133 per wet ton. So that's a three-year firm contract. So the same price stayed the same for all three years. So what I did was, I also projected our, if I take our actual price of $104.08, use the 4.8% projected forward to the midterm of theirs, so year two, it would, Wollinger's price would be $108.95 per wet ton, still less than Torrington's bid price. My concern is, is one, we would have to go out on the open markets, and I think prices would come at least 10% if not up to 15% higher than what we're increasing. That's a risk. There's only really going to be two bidders out there. You know the market. The market itself is constraining itself. With only two bidders, it's not a lot of options, especially in Western Connecticut. And I do look at the transportation of it. Torrington is right up Route Eight north from both Waterbury and Nogatuck. To get over to Waterbury for us, 916-9184, then Route Eight south, for the back roads. So to answer your questions, 8% increase? It is an increase. When we started this with Syngro, we were in-house looking at 10 to 12 possible. So when they came back with eight, quite frankly, we said, we'll take it. The market's constrained. And in some respects, with Syngro, I would say a portion of the price is basically insurance. If you stop moving your sludge offsite, you're going to lose. And our price also, this is a really granular detail, includes the dumpsters. Torrington is purchasing and or renting their dumpsters for additional money above and beyond this transportation. So the pricing is, is there. And just because we are budgeting, just as another point of reference, the fiscal year 2122 Sewer Division budget, we included the additional sludge that we're going to generate from the tertiary phosphorus, and we also carried a 10%. We didn't have this number when we were doing our budget. So we're comfortable that our 2022 budget is a blue number. So that's, did that answer your question, Mr. Bernie?
Sure did.
Go out to the open market and go, you know, and that cuts a lot of ways.
Yeah, understood.
And procedurally, I will ask you to, question number four, procedurally, I will ask you to confirm that the ability for the PUC to approve a five-year extension was contemplated by a permissible, by the December 13, 2016 bid waiver. I like this question, because I actually asked this question already to the Department of Law, Janice Small, because I had the same concern. I wanted to make sure, and her, so her short answer is that, when I double-checked this morning, was yes, procedurally we can. The bid waiver that was passed by, endorsed by the Public Utilities Commission, and then passed by the Town Council in 2016, allowed us to enter into the agreement. The agreement itself is composed of the original five-year, but the five-year. But I had that same question. So, so with that, the recommendation from the Sewer Division is to move forward with the sludge disposal and transportation agreement with Syngro and Waterbury. Do you have any answer to any more questions?
Mr. Ryan Bold.
I am in agreement with your comments. I think this is a protective agreement, protects us with both disposal and transportation. The cost is reasonable, and it's been reviewed by law consistent with Amendment Number, Amendment Number One. So I would be prepared to make a motion to authorize.
Waste Water Treatment Sledge Transportation Disposal Agreement Extension.
Are we, for clarification, are we authorizing Director to enter into, to enter an agreement for the Amendment, Syngro Amendment Number Two, including terms and conditions extending from January 1, 22 to December 31, 26. So we'd be authorizing Hubert to sign the agreement.
Okay, acceptable. I'll second the motion. Discussion on the motion, just I concur with Mr. Ryan Bold's comments. Thank you for the thorough and random. Mr. Amway, thank you for answering the questions. I'm comfortable with the entry into the extension. We have a motion made, and second, all in favor, sign by saying aye.
Aye.
We'll stay unanimous in the motion. Thank you. Onto Agenda Item Number Eight, Discussion and Action Sewer Legend Amendment, Manhole Repair and Lining Maintenance Collection System. And my question to you through, Mr. Henshaw, is are we going to talk about eight and nine as a single? Yeah, okay. So up on the agenda matters eight and nine, but we will vote on them separately and take away?
So I'll just, Mr. Ryan Bold, that's the question as to why they're separate. And so, the first motion that we'd be asking you to make and approve is to the money from operating into retained earnings. And then it's a second procedural motion to move it back out of retained earnings into capital. You can't put capital straight into operating. You can't go from operating straight into accounting. So this really could have been eight and nine for AA and eight B. So that is why there are, there are two. Per the government general accepting accounting practices, that's how you have to do it. So that's the logistics behind it. Let me tell you the rationale behind it. So since 2018, we've developed a manhole inspection form. So when the sewer collection staff is out doing their high-pressure cleaning and their TCTV of the sewer lines, they also do a formal manhole inspection. We rank them, take all notes, and we end up with a rank one through five. We then prioritize the manholes, particularly looking at our sewer sheds with high infiltration for groundwater that is coming in through cracks or voids in the manhole. Subsequently to that, we basically rebuilt our manhole rehabilitation spec over the winter, correct, at the same time we were building the budget. And what we realized is that the majority of the money, nearly most of the money, will be for a geo, a geopolymer wiring. So basically, it's also called spin seal. They go in and they line the entire manhole from invert to the manhole with basically a synthetic line. So it adds to a betterment of the manhole, and it also adds to the structural, increases the structural integrity of the manhole. And in some, and it's nearly the same price as putting in a new manhole, because you're avoiding the destruction of the traffic going out of manhole. So because of that, initially, we felt that this money was really more aligned towards a capital item than an operating item. So this is essentially housekeeping. But we obviously would be doing this on the budget starts, because we included next year's money instead of operating as well. Then you also look at, each year, we put $250,000 towards our sanitary sewer lining. That's a capital line expense. So we said, why is one, they pay for it. The apple and orange, why aren't they both out? So this is the housekeeping, but that's really what it is. Most of the money will be for the geo, geopolymer lining. That's a betterment, increases the structural integrity. That is the definition.
Mr. Ryan Bold.
I just would like to clarify, so the $30,000 that he requested, it's coming from account 673 or 46100673. That's currently got $904,000, $61,000. Is that correct?
No, currently, right now, the current balance as it's made is about $32,000.
Okay, so this is actually, that's, that's where I was getting confused. So, so the $904,000 that was originally budgeted, so you're down to the last $32,000. You're going to be moving 30 out of it into retained earnings. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So I would, Mr. Henshaw.
Yeah, thank you.
I will make a motion to move $30,000 from account 46100673, Mainards Collection System to TO2, Return to Retained Earnings.
I second that motion. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing out all of those who take the motion, sign by saying aye. I, we'll stay unanimous. I understand the motion. I understand the motion on agenda item number nine. Mr. Ryan Bull, if you don't have any questions.
Yes. And for this item, correctly, hold on, we are seeking to move the $30,000 now from retained earnings into the capital, and help me with this, that would be 30, that would be retained earnings into, what is it, 46300343? Correct. So I'll make a motion to move $30,000 from retained earnings into collection systems or apartments.
I second that motion, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Let's stand unanimous. Mr. Henderson, as I'm looking at the agenda, I don't see a public question and answer.
It's down at the bottom. It's seven to 7:50.
Okay, great. It is now 7 o'clock. I will open up public Q and A. Any members in the public wish to ask any questions?
Yes, please.
Pick your hand by yourself. What do you want to say?
Adelaide Copfer, 35, Forest Tree Lane. I was, thank you for the chance to ask a question. I was trying to understand the material from the workshop about the rates, the rate generation study, I think. I don't recall the exact title, I'm sorry. That was held about a month back, I guess. And so if I understand that correctly, the major change in the rates for the next four or five years is supposed to be a small increase on the residential side and basically flat or a small decrease on the other customer classes. Is that correct so far?
I'm going to direct that question to Mr. Henderson, understanding that it was framed, the question was framed in a particular way. I understand that the response faded different in terms of just the increase based on sort of the ROI approach.
Tony, you correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that she's, that.
Correct.
Yes, yes, you are correct.
Okay. And I think if I understand correct, the main reasoning, I think there were two points. Number one, that the residential customer class caused, the majority of costs, I think somewhere between 40 and 50%, I think I'm referring to, oh, page number 29, the chart with the four load shape diagrams. It might be a different page, but somewhere in that region. I apologize, I don't have my computer here. I'm trying to do it from memory. There was a page with four blue bar graphs with the load shape.
Okay.
And so it seems like the, the class, the customer class of residential customers is causing the, the majority of cost for the demand, the peak demand charge.
Correct.
That was one of the reasons, so.
That's one of the reasons, correct.
And, and the other reason, if I recall correctly, was that the peak hour has shifted from about one or two in the afternoon to six or seven, six, I think, six or 18 in the after, in the late afternoon or the evening.
Yes, that's what those charts show.
So I was wondering, when the consultant was talking about these charts, were those, the way I understood it, because he mentioned ISO New England or the New England area for one, and he also mentioned the shifting backwards of the peak hour was mostly related to behind-the-meter solar. So my question is, was he actually talking about the Wallingford shaped load or the New England shaped loads? To my understanding, there aren't that many behind-the-meter solar installations in Wallingford that would actually shift the peak low, the peak hour that far later in the day? So I'm really just trying to understand, was he talking about the New England shape load, load shape or the Wallingford load shape?
Yes, yes, the regional load shape, yes, because that's the data that he had.
Okay, okay. So that was my assumption, but then just my question is really just, does that even apply for Wallingford? A, we don't have that many solar installations, is our Wallingford peak hour the same hour of the day?
Yes.
And B, is, is, so are the assumptions for Wallingford the same as for New England?
Our capacity costs are incurred based on the regional peak, so it's what Wallingford is doing at the region's peak hour.
Okay. So, so it would basically be the same load shape, no matter what is happening in Wallingford in, let's say, in real life? Because we don't have that.
Hasn't a tremendous effort and expense on load data recorders placed at dozens, if not more, customer locations within Wallingford, and then the statistical study to analyze all of that data, using regional surrogates is the best alternative? And that's all we did.
Okay. I was just wondering if that is the best way we can do it, because my feeling is that Wallingford is a little bit different from the rest of Connecticut or even New England, because we have this municipal electric division and our, we have very little solar installations, and you know, there are a few items that, that just make us different. So I was really just curious if, if that is the best we can do, but it seems.
Mayhew, is that something you can chime in on?
Yeah, thanks. Appreciate it. Yes, it's, it's not the best that we can do, it's the correct way of modeling it. Brian, Brian was absolutely on target. Wallingford gets billed for capacity and transmission based on what the load in Wallingford is during the hour of the regional peak demand, and it doesn't matter whether or not you have, you have solar behind your meter, it's what your residential customers are doing at 6 o'clock in the evening, which is when the, when the regional peak occurs. Doesn't even matter if your system peak is in the afternoon, the, if, you get billed on what you're doing in the evening. You do benefit from that. If Wallingford has a, has its system peak at a different time of day, you're paying less for capacity and transmission, so that's a good thing. But still, when you go to spread the costs of capacity and transmission across the customers on the basis of their contribution to incurring those costs, you have to look at what the, what each customer's contributing to that load during that peak hour.
And, and I would note that the load forecast that was used on the basis of big pieces for this cost of service study and rate development indicates that wholesale power costs are projected to go back to the next four, largely because of decreasing capacity costs.
Scott, for any other questions?
Nope, I think that was it. If I may annotate, what Mr. Henderson just said was hard to understand, I don't know, for, for recording issues or, there were background noises, or he broke up or something, so.
Did you want me to repeat myself?
That will be helpful, thank you. I apologize, it was really just hard to understand.
Well, we're, we're in a room here, we're all wearing masks, so that is something to do with it, I suspect. The, I believe what I said was that the, the wholesale power supply forecast, or the forecast of wholesale power costs for the next several years, which is one of the, sort of the building blocks of the cost of service study and the rate development, projects declining capacity costs each of the next four years, which themselves, and the size of those capacity decreases are so large as to actually, you're actually flatten or drive negative wholesale power supply cost changes over the next three to four years. And we see that in the, in the, we see that impact in the cost of service study and in the subsequent rates.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. And that was all, all the questions I had tonight, thank you.
Scott, any other questions from the public? Hearing none of the closing public Q and A, and we'll move on to agenda item number 10, discussion in action water budget amendment, security camera server. Ramley, for you, Mr. Henderson?
Okay, thank you. So this is a budget amendment in October 2020, the security camera server that is shared by both the electric division and water division and the sewer division catastrophically failed and lights up. So the electric division went forward and procured a new server. The electric division paid 100% for that server, and at this time, the water division needs to pay their fair share, it is 37.5% of the server cost. So we are requesting, so this was an unexpected failure in replacement, we did not budget for it. So the water division is requesting a budget amendment of $3,500 to account 433, that's 00397, and the funds will be made available for the corresponding increase in the appropriation from retained earnings, i.e. cash. With that, I'll answer any questions you may have.
Any questions, Mr. Ryan Bull?
No.
I'm standing on the agenda item.
I move to, move to the back of the panel, retain earnings, security charges, equipment account 433, that's 00397.
A second motion, discussion on motion, hearing none, all those in favor of putting the motions in, signal by saying aye. Aye. Let's stand unanimous. On to agenda item 11, discussion in action, technical authority regarding kinetic energy assistance program.
Yes, gentlemen, you have my memorandum dated April 27th of this year. It's an annual request seeking permission authorization for me to execute this document so that the electric division may participate in the kinetic energy assistance program. Also, commission wishes you could authorize the director to sign subsequent forms, so we wouldn't have to bring this back every year, or you can choose not to, we can play faculty, the choice is yours.
I'm okay with the annual renewal. Mr. Ryan Bull, any questions, please, comments?
I think this is fine, and I'd be, time to authorize, Mr. Henderson, to, to the seven, any cases.
I second that motion, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of Mr. Ryan Bull's motion, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Let's stand unanimous. Agenda item number 12, discussion electric division workshop, proposed rates. I'm going to turn it over to the director of the electric division and director of public utilities. And just a question that I had, this presentation that was attached to our materials in the agenda, item number 12, that's something new that we haven't seen before, that wasn't part of the package that we received when we had the workshop.
Yeah, I think a lot of the information may be the same, but the specific material, the specific publication, if you will, is different.
You thought it was very digestible, easy to read, very understandable.
You hear that, Mayhew?
I'm shocked.
So I'll turn it over to you to take what was long or short as you would like, if it's very digestible.
Aye, thank you, Mr. Attorney Chairman. I will hand this on to Mr. Bukary with this brief comment that he and his staff and Mr. Mayhew have done a lot of hard work to get to this point, and I think Tony and Mayhew were quite well prepared to sort of summarize, provide sort of a high-level summary, and then get the highlights of this, this particular material that we really want to touch on in this workshop.
I just have a brief introduction, some of the stuff we've touched upon at our last meeting, but you know, we're here tonight for a workshop on the proposed revised rates for the next four years. My brick set electric division staff has worked very closely with our rate consultant, Mayhew, CEB from PLN, to develop the proposed rates. The rates were developed with two broad objectives in mind. One is to ensure that revenues are adequate to cover expenses over the long term, and you know, the overall rate of return within statutory guidelines is between 5 and 8%. To move rates, the other objective is to move rates of returns across all customer classes that are more, move to rates, I'm sorry, of return across all customer classes that are more equitable and reflective of industry norms. One of the things that was performed is a historic test your cost of service study using fiscal year 19 data to more accurately reflect pre-COVID conditions. This methodology allocated cost to each rate class and compared actual revenues from each class to allocated cost to determine rates of return. Calculated rate of returns for individual customer classes varied significantly, mainly due to two items. One was the different allocation factors used for capacity and transmission expenses, and the other was a shift in the time of day when capacity and transmission billing peak hour occurs. We've then conducted a pro forma test year cost of service study utilizing forecast data to determine the impact of changes in rate design. And one of the things, just to kind of highlight, and you can see it in the material, it was presented on its item number 12-3, but the proposed, the proposed rates, you know, on an overall basis, you know, including all customer classes, you'll see in the dark blue where it says overall, in fiscal year 22 shows slightly over a 2% decrease, fiscal year 23 is a 2% decrease, 24 is nearly flat, and fiscal year 25 is roughly a 2% increase, and that's overall. And then what I want to just highlight is that for residential customers, in fiscal year 22, there's no change. It's, it's a minor increase in the rate, but it is offset by projected decline in purchase power costs that we covered earlier. Fiscal year 23 appears, it shows a 1% decrease, there's no change in the rate over 22, but because, again, declining purchase power cost, it comes across as a, as a 1% decrease. And then in fiscal year 24, there's a 2.4% rate increase, and in fiscal year 25, 3.1% rate increase. So that's kind of a summary of, you know, what we're at. I do agree with the comments, Mayhew did, you know, an outstanding job in kind of summarizing this in a, in a short, you know, document that kind of captures everything, you know, within 12 pages, it very, you know, very nicely reflects all the work that was done. Again, I want to give credit to the folks in the office. Brian has done an outstanding job in supporting this effort, you know, with the transition over to the water and sewer divisions, also on his lot, has done a tremendous amount of work on this. I'll open it up to questions now.
Mr. Ryan Bull. I'm supporting the document, I think it addresses the fact that Wallingford has continuous darkness of the lowest energy electric rates in the state, and that not by coincidence, it's by, I'm just panicking, revenue requirements matter. revenue requirements adequacy, like that we're looking at rates across customer classes that are equitable. And it's a lot of fact that we've considered sort of the allocation factors and T and D, the regional usage, including where square house solar provides energy and where it stops and it's coming at a shift until later time of day. So I think it's very good. And again, it just reinforces the notion that we want to keep the rates above and power adequate for life. So I'm going with this and look forward to setting a date. That's clear from the call.
So well said, Mr. Ryanville. Thank you so much. I just also want to just echo, Mr. Naples, thank you very much. I know you're doing triple duty here. Your domain's efforts, I appreciate it. Thank you very much. Mayhew, I was a skeptic regarding the, the sort of ability to stop having the residential subsidize everyone else. No, having everyone else subsidize the residential. We had a battle about that four years ago. It was an epic battle. Persuasively, you have convinced me that this is the right approach, an equitable approach, fair approach. And again, I appreciate your ability to say that in as few as words as you've given this deck presentation. I'll also get a little bit on to a public hearing to do with what I have to say.
And you sort of stole some thunder that I was going to throw into comments. And you said it very well. And again, I want to praise Mayhew/PLM for the approach here. And I'm really glad we got a fresh look at this. And the idea of individual customer class rates of return is going to stick. That's an idea, I may steal that idea, Mayhew would use it somewhere else someday. Who knows? But it's like finding a good recipe that somebody else's, you're taking home and cooking for yourself. I think that's, this is a great idea. And as you said, it's very, very well done, very well described. I'm very pleased with this product. How it says what.
Okay. If there's nothing else regarding the workshop, I will, I will close the workshop. And I, it's a point of order. Did we need to actually have a motion to come to a workshop or is this identifying it on the agenda?
I don't think we needed it.
Don't worry about the agenda item number 13, Discussion on Action Set Date for Public Hearing Proposed Electric Rates. Through you, Mr. Hendershaw, Siri.
So just, you know, we'd like, the plan and goal is to have the rates effective July 1. In order to do that, they have to be noticed, usually a public notice in the paper for the entire, an entire month, a full month before that. What I propose, if that is acceptable to the PUC, is to schedule the public hearing on the next regular meeting, which is currently scheduled for May 18th, 21.
Does that mean all statutory requirements in terms of notice for the public hearing?
That will allow us to, so if we schedule the public hearing on the 18th and we adopt the rates on the 18th, we will be able to notice by 5:30. That will give us the full month of June and rates will be effective July 1.
Correct. Mr. Ryanville, I entertain the motion to set a date for public hearing.
I entertain the motion that we have a public hearing for proposed rates on May 18th.
And I will second the motion and the special motion. Hearing now all those in favor of adopting the public hearing date for proposed rates, signal of the saying aye. Aye. Let's stay unanimous. Okay. Any correspondence for community votes?
No, sir.
Just a question about the service dual public hearing in room 315 and the utilization of GoToMeeting, whatever this platform is. Does that whole decision-making process come about? I like it.
What we've done here this evening?
Yeah.
This sort of happened, Tony, correct me if I'm wrong, is that Mayhew was unable to come here physically. And so we interpreted that as similar to the requirements of the governor's executive, of a hybrid meeting. We might have stretched the letter of that executive order a bit in that the way, my understanding is the way that's worded is if Mayhew didn't want to meet in person, we have to accommodate that. We chose to go to that format of meeting because Mayhew was unable to be here. And we wanted him very much here as part of this, part of workshop. So that's how we ended up with this meeting format. See?
I like it. It seems like it may be a bit more for a particular member of staff.
But tonight went smooth.
But I really appreciated this. Okay. Sitting on the turntable. Hearing now, I'm standing motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn at 7:30.
And I second any opinions in favor of the number of aye. Aye. Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, Mayhew.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Take care.